We'll call the meeting to order at 7:01 PM on Monday, October 21st. And this is our 63rd annual meeting and budget hearing. So, the meeting is called to order. I'm assuming that Shayna is available by phone?
Yes. Let me share my screen and we can... I mean, you weren't going to stop me from sharing my screen, but I will share my screen. And we will celebrate. I felt like there's just... We've called the meeting to order with our temporary chairperson, Board President Craig Howery. I'm just going to review this. Oh, that was weird. I'm going to review the agenda with us, with you. We're going to talk about the parliamentarian and the election of the chairperson for the agenda. Then we're going to go through our minutes from last time, treasurer's report. We're going to talk about the budget. And then ultimately, we start moving into action items. And that's the adoption of a tax levy, one if the November referendum passes and a second if the November referendum fails. Then we're going to talk about board member salaries, reimbursement of school board members, disposal of surplus property, which we'll explain at that point, annual meeting date, and any other new business. And that is it. So, a good structure for you. Just some reminders. The list is going around. This is where our qualified electors are signing in to be a qualified elector. You must be a US citizen aged 18 or older, and you have to have resided in the district boundaries for at least 28 days. So, when you're addressing the chair, be sure to state your name. And we will follow Robert's rules. So, there'll be a motion, a second before discussion. Discussion is held, then voting's placed. Typically, we'll use a voice vote, but if we can also use paper ballots as requested by the electors. And if there is proposed motions for new business that are within the power of the annual meeting and are not already included in the agenda, those should be done in writing and signed and presented to the chairperson before action. So, with that, I want to remind people that there are limited powers of the annual meeting. These are on pages, I believe, three and four of your packet that explain the powers and responsibilities. There's a lot of words there, so we will walk you through those as they come up. But I think more than anything, wanted to just make it clear that in this annual meeting, there are limited powers of the electors as defined by state statute. As Craig mentioned earlier, we do have a parliamentarian, Attorney Shayna Lewis of Running Louis... 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 I bet they... I bet he liked that. And Lacy, that is available by phone, should we stumble upon a procedural question that requires any issues. In order for this meeting to proceed, we need to elect... You need to elect a chairperson. It can be any one of these electors. So, at this time, I turn it over to Craig, our temporary chairperson, to lead us in this activity.
Okay. I would look for nominees for chairperson of our annual meeting. Craig, I'll nominate you. Okay?
I'll second.
Thank you. Anyone else? Not hearing anyone else. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, and we will move along.
All right.
So, we have the minutes are attached in the packet.
Yep. These do not require a motion or a vote. They're there for your reference.
That's right. And the treasurer's report and budget summary provided by school district treasurer Megan Thessler, she is unavailable this evening. Mr. Tarnitzer, generally, we would waive that reading?
Yeah, so that's certainly something the electors can choose to do here today. You do have it in your packet for your review. I will say, there's a lot of information there. We will be discussing the budget in great detail coming up very... Well, in some detail. Coming up, sufficient detail, coming up very soon for you, so...
I would look for a motion to waive the treasurer's report.
Craig, I'll move that we waive the treasurer's report.
Thank you, Tom. Do I have a second?
For ten minutes. Sorry.
Yeah, but I don't think we have to have... Do we have to have a motion on the minutes?
Usually, we're doing it on...
Oh, okay. So, let's go back then. Sorry, I missed that. I didn't know that we needed to. So, for the minutes, instead of reading them out loud to all of yous, a similar motion to the one that was just generated. Why don't we finish this motion, actually, since we already did this?
Yep. Do I have a second to Tom's motion?
I can second.
Thank you, Megan.
And just to clarify, we are moving to waive the reading and approving the report as written, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that the approval was in.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries for zero.
Let's go back to the minutes, then.
Minutes of the 2024 annual meeting.
So, this is similar... A similar motion is... We'd entertain a similar motion for the waiving of the reading of the minutes.
I will make that motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I can second that.
Thank you, Bruce.
Can we be clear on what we are moving?
I move to waive the reading and approve the minutes from last year's meeting.
Sixteen...
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries for zero.
No, motion just carries.
Motion carries.
Yes, because it's...
Because everyone's...
Unanimously.
I apologize. I apologize. I'm sorry.
It's okay. You got... You're really good with the four-zero, though. I was proud of you, but unanimously.
Only missed that once.
Unanimously.
All right. That hearing on the budget.
All right. Well, we're going to go to... What we usually start with is what will be the result of the budget. And we added a new thing in that we've never had really before at this time of year, but also the result of what referendum, past referendum, would look like. So, if you look from at the bottom, you know, 2223, just about 17.5 million, 2324, 18.2 million, and then pretty darn flat for this year without an approved referendum, and then 20 million. Now, that total is the levy. And that levy includes the general fund, which is controlled by the revenue cap, your debt service fund, that's from the 2016 referendum, and then you have the capital fund, which actually is within the general fund and the revenue cap. It's dollars that are moved from the general fund to the capital fund, and I'll talk about those a little bit. And then there are community services fund, which I'll also talk about. All right. Total of all funds, just over $80 million, of which, again, includes general fund, special education fund, debt service, capital project fund, school nutrition service fund, and community service. Just a reminder, of that 80.5 million, 32.6 million of those expenditures estimated are for WEVA, of which, just a reminder, that we retain about 36 million... Excuse me. I wish. I was like, here, here. Revenues are about 36 million, so of which, our school district is very unique than other school districts across the state, retaining $1.4 million that would normally have to come from taxpayers.
It's up there, too, if you want to...
So, the general fund. Mr. Tarnitzer?
Oh, sorry.
No problem.
I was distracted.
It's fine. So, we just talked about the general fund. It's 69.3 million worth of expenditures, but if we subtract out WEVA, that decreases down to closer to the 30... $37 million budget. Our revenues, about 66.9 million. So, currently, we have a $2.4 million deficit. There is an upcoming referendum that I'm aware of on November 5th that would bring us closer to meeting our deficit needs for this year. So, we will be using an estimated $650,000 of reserves. This is fairly significant. This is our first annual meeting in 21 years that is proposing a deficit budget regardless of a past or failed referendum.
I'm just dramatic pause for effect.
Appreciate that. I turned my phone off so I wouldn't have anything come up to make those sounds. You know, so the Fund 10 budget did have some initial issues, which we are now here. Just about a year ago, we were talking about what was coming, which is the fact that we would have a deficit of over $3 billion because our state legislature governor seemed to be okay defunding education by using one-time dollars from the federal government as opposed to staying within inflationary changes. We continue to chase inflationary impacts, not only in previous two, three fiscal years, but also what's coming forward. We had an April referendum failure. So, after that, the district with its board and administration made $1.2 million of cuts. Since that time, we've also had some significant enrollment changes between May and August. We have lost resident students, and that will impact future budgets.
What's the number on that approximately?
Well, the most significant number to look at is what is the difference in the revenue cap change for enrollment, which, again, there's two, three-year rolling averages. So, our rolling average change is about sixty... Excuse me. Eighty-four student difference in our revenue cap change.
A loss?
A loss. So, it is very significant. Now, the great thing is, and I'll get to this in a moment... I'm going to come back to that, Craig. Some great things that were able to be maintained in this fiscal year '25 budget that the school board and administration should be proud of, and our community, that we did continue to maintain our guaranteed salary changes that had a two-year plan for both our salary and hourly wage earners of the teachers and support staff. We also maintained our current benefit packages that also are up at the end of this fiscal year. And the board, along with administration, our community, the regular... the referendum engagement group, developed financial plans for the next three years, which helped develop an upcoming referendum.
Jeff, if I can go back, just the loss of students, the departure, we say eighty-four, that's pretty much an average around... I mean, it reflects pretty much what's going on in Dane County, is it not?
Uh, no.
It isn't?
No. There are school districts that had gains and there are school districts that had decreases.
Okay.
So, we are fairly similar to Stoughton reported, kind of a surprise as well, of outgoing more than they thought would. Middleton as well. Verona, DeForest, and Prairie were pretty strong in growth. So, I think what we can follow is that there's more residential market availability.
Okay.
Housing market availability in other communities that might be more affordable.
But birth rates are down.
Yes.
Across the state as well. People are having less babies.
The other thing is that there are more opportunities for students to go to private schools and also virtual schools. Now, for us, the nice thing is our kids that choose to go to virtual schools remain in our count. So, the future, there is an upcoming election, if I hadn't mentioned that, which has a pretty important referendum coming up for our school district. One thing is, again, we have committed to that we are using some of our fund balance over the next several years. You can't sustain that forever. It will put you into a place of having to go past the available amount that takes you into short-term borrowing, which can be costly.
We worked very, very hard to not have to do short-term borrowing.
We haven't had to do that since 2017.
Right.
So, and we created our fund balance based on years in which we did not have to use the virtual school revenue. So, we built our fund balance on other people's money, other taxpayers across the state, not the McFarland taxpayers. So, that was a plan that we put in place as we entered into those arrangements back in 2007, 2008. We've been using those excesses to build up until we hit 2017. Then we started to use, since about 2020, some of the reserves that we would have increased with the virtual school. So, we've been fortunate to have that as a tool. Enrollment. There's a really cool provision in the revenue cap that they stuck in a few years ago. Unfortunately, it's only good for one year, which is you get an exemption to your declining enrollment. Our declining enrollment exemption for this year is about $300,000. So, we start next year with a deficit of an additional $300,000 unless we're able to turn the tide on our enrollment, which then leads us to also looking pretty heavily at our open enrollment policies in January, which the school board will be taking action on. So, November, December, January are pretty important months for us to be looking at not only our enrollment, but what our opportunities are with open enrollment to either fill our seats with residents or non-residents. We also continue to get to chase our labor competition. The districts around us are constantly having openings. We have people that sometimes leave to go to other jobs, and then we turn around and get people from other school districts. So, you saw that in an action item, if you happened to be here earlier, that we had a special education teacher leave for a different sector. However, we were able to recruit from bordering district, so to continue good educational planning for our students. So, that was the general fund. The special education fund, it's about $8 million, with over 53% of that being funded by local property taxes that are transferred from the general fund to the special education fund. And then the remainder is state aides and federal aides, accounting for 28% and 19% respectively. The debt service fund, I'd like to just remind people, this is kind of like... This is our annual mortgage. We have an annual mortgage payment of about 4.5 million. This remaining mortgage payments are due to the 2016 referendum, which was 65.1 million. At this time, we don't have any refinancing opportunities because we did great with our rates back in 2016, 2017, and 2018, because we borrowed those funds in three different borrowings to take advantage of different opportunities back then. So, we do anticipate that we will complete those prior to 2038. It is not unlikely for districts to refinance when the rates are at a really good point to get that down to where you might cut that short by three to four years, kind of like a homeowner. When you see opportunities, you take them. A really unknown fact that a lot of people don't know us about is there is a limit on the amount of debt we can take on, just like villages and cities and counties, they have a limit. It's based on equalized value. School districts cannot exceed more than 10% of their equalized value. We are at a whopping 2.4% of that. So, if the district did come into need, it has plenty of room for more debt if needed. Capital projects fund, we are one of the few school districts that's been able to kind of maintain capital funds project, because, again, it is within the revenue cap, which is fairly short-sighted by our legislatures, I think, because there are times we need to make significant updates, particularly boilers, parking lots, roofs. So, we've been able to manage in the last 20 years on putting $249,000 into this account and use the balances as we've planned them out. This last year, Wobisa Intermediate School came out of this fund. We have MHS, a boiler replacement that's already actually occurred this fall, which is great, because it might get cold at some point. Tell you, heating is a lot cheaper than cooling, so I'd like it to get cold sooner rather than later for budget purposes as well. We've embarked on a major project of evaluating about 70% of our roof is back to 1997 here at the high school. We also have 1979 built-up roof that is over the old pool area. It still has the rock ballast on top of it. We had drone footage taken of that... This facility with heat sensing as well to see if we have better areas or worse areas, because it's about 20 different sections up on the roof. So, we will start building out a long-range plan for replacement of 70% of the remaining roof that had not any newer than 1997. So, that's a coming attraction. We'll start taking core samples, which is my favorite thing, to see if you have wet insulation. That's when you determine you have to change your roofs at these large facilities, because if your insulation is wet, you're losing heat, so you're... And cooling, and you're wasting energy.
What is it, 27, 28 years? That's gotta be fairly good, I would think. For our environment.
Yeah. And we were very fortunate with the Wobisa, because we caught it before it got any insulation penetration, and we were able to do a overlay this summer on that. So, and that's about the same age roof. So, this will just take a little bit more activity and probably about six to eight years. School nutrition, also known as food service. Just a reminder, the National School Lunch Program ended free meals for everybody at the end of June of 2022. We continue to advocate that maybe that be put back in place for all communities across the country. Additionally, the National School Lunch Program decreased reimbursements in fiscal year '24 based on free and reduced numbers. So, we lost 20% of what would have been our revenues from the previous year. So, fiscal year '22, '23 had 20% higher reimbursements that McFarland would receive. So, we've had two major declines, basically. However, we do have fairly healthy reserves, so we've been able to do something that we've been wanting to do both last year and this year, which is whether you're free or reduced, you get the free pricing. And we're using our balances in the food service department to pick up the difference between the free and reduced reimbursement that we get from the federal government. So, we feel that is something we can probably sustain for at least one more fiscal year if they don't change their policies, which would be great. This was the first year that we increased prices by... The average was 20 cents for meals. So, as an average, a parent is paying for both lunch and breakfast, 15.75 a week for a child. So, it's the first major change since 1516. And just as anecdotally, you know, we changed our bell times at the middle school and the high school to really accomplish some things with transportation and also just better start times for kids. It has not lowered our expectations and our participation for breakfast and lunch, and it's been going pretty good. And one other cool thing, I like food services always has the fun things that we can talk about and not all of that other stuff sometimes, but CPS has successfully launched their recess before lunch program, which is new and is going well. And it's proven that kids go run around, and they will sit better and eat lunch and not feel like they want to rush out to the playground. So, we'll continue to see how that goes and see if any of our other buildings, really specifically just Wobisa, might want to take that on.
That's a great idea.
So, hats off to Jackie and her staff. As Aaron mentioned in a school board meeting not too long ago, I'm very proud of our food service program and the work they've been able to do. Every year is something new and exciting.
It's pretty remarkable, actually. Is there... Do you get... Do you get any sort of significant pushback on the length of time that the kids get to eat?
Sometimes when a person doesn't agree with it.
Yeah. I would say that's cool.
I gotta be honest, not that often.
Tee that one up.
It's a regular topic of conversation, and I think it's best... I think when you're in a building and you see that some kids naturally...
Former principals might know a little bit more about this.
Yes. Finish faster and some finish later, and you have limited supervisors, it's tricky. It's tricky. And to be honest, it's a social time for kids, too. And so, sometimes they're very excited to talk to the people next to them and less excited about what's in front of them. I mean, imagine that at your house, saying you have this amount of time to eat. Go! You know, some kids do that very well and some don't. So, it's... Yes. Some kids would always want more time.
Teachers would want some more.
Yeah. But it's funny, because people don't really want to have a longer school day, so...
I would say that...
Funny how that works.
You know, when the recess is before lunch, they eat better.
Yes.
And eat more.
Yeah.
But they don't have the flexibility of going beyond a certain number of minutes.
True.
They just have to get back into the classroom.
Right.
Like you said, Aaron, different kids require different things. And I think, you know, somehow, I wish we could accommodate that better, but I understand why we have the rules and the processes that we have. And Jeff, that's sort of like a two or three cent increase in the food lunch program each year for the past eight years or nine years.
What's been great is another thing that I didn't put up here, but even Mr. Tarnitzer was pretty excited about it.
Oh.
That we had hit over 50% participation at the middle school, which was...
Yes.
Fairly unheard of.
Yes.
Partly because we started also another new program last year, where there's some more à la carte, grab-and-go opportunities for our middle schoolers. So, and if you ever want your kids at home to, you know, take their trays to the line just like they do here, just be like Jeff and buy some trays and give them to your kids 15 years ago and see if they'll pick it up.
Interesting.
Interesting, Jeff.
I'm just proud of the fact...
My daughter has them now at the college.
I'm proud of the fact that this district is willing to try new ideas. And I think it's something that we in this community should be really proud of. We're always on the cutting edge, and I think that's really cool.
All right. Community services is the last fund we'll kind of talk... All right, Community Services is the last fund we'll kind of talk about, Mr. Turner. It's supported tax by taxpayers by sixty percent. And then the other portion, forty percent, is fee-based. That is in particular to our recreation programming, our Angio Donald Aquatic Center, and our PAC. We continue to see good growth, recreational growth, particularly in our adult and senior areas. And our M-PAC is always in high demand. We try to make sure that it is a good balance so that our community is able to use it and it is not always used by outside dance companies and outside swim programs for the Angio Donald Aquatic Center. So, we do try to put together a, quite a balance. Within that and how we get to those points is we have a strong group that meets, meets every, every two weeks, which is our athletic director, our supervisors of those three areas, myself and our Williams grounds administrator to make sure that we're keeping a balance for the community, balance for our school, and then a balance for outside. This fund also supports the McFarland Youth Center and also our School Resource Officer So, this evening.
Is it okay if we just pause for just a second before we get into the levies?
You bet.
Well, I just wanted to just see, you know, we went through all six major funds and I just wanted to open it up if anybody had specific questions about any of those six that they were, or comments or thoughts about.
The only comment I have is on the slide here. The taxpayer, taxpayer supported sixty percent fee-based programming, forty percent. Has there ever been any type of study if we were to increase the fee-based programming by another five or ten percent, how that might impact those that use those programs now?
So, we probably, to be honest, Tom, have been increasing our fees already by an average of five percent annually for fees because to hire the lifeguards and our even coaches, we have to pay more. So, the market there, we've been offsetting. I think that one of the keys to this is the fact that we haven't levied in community services any additional amount of money. This would be our fourth year at five-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand dollars of taxpayer money. So.
How can you do that the way prices increase?
Again, we've, we've tried to build programming that generates more opportunities for more kids with less staff.
Perfect.
At the pool, you'll see that at the same time that the high school might be using it for FIAT or the middle school might be using it for FIAT, we have community members in for community swim and we're also using the pool for special education time as well. So, we try to make sure that we are not missing an opportunity to have the facility used when there's staff. A lot of good partnerships have been coming together with our recreation programming where we now have our last kind of piece to the puzzle where we have MYBO, which is the McFarland Youth Baseball Association. So, we let these organizations be a part of our recreation programming, that they're able to use the facilities, they operate on their own. And then recreation has moved more into opportunities for kids, which allows us to do just, you know, larger camps. Again, more kids involved, more opportunities for kids, less staffing, so.
Those summertime camps?
Summer evenings, weekends.
Yes.
Yeah, it really sounds like, you know, you have the focus on kids and the opportunities provided to them. So, I congratulate you and the staff trying to draw more kids into these without a significant price increase then.
Kind of like food services, one of my funds I really enjoy.
Is it accurate to say that we are somewhat rare in the state of Wisconsin to provide a recreation program through the school district?
Correct.
Very unusual.
You are correct.
Do you know of any others?
Yeah, there's probably twenty-five to thirty across the state that have this much programming. It's rare to have a community that has where the pool is also run by the school district, which is great because we can open that thing up all year long. Where just a summer pool doesn't cover it all the time.
Other questions from our electors?
It's a lot of numbers, too.
Here's a lot of numbers.
So, Aaron.
I don't think it's necessarily a question, but I think with you going through this, I think it just really demonstrates how well the school district has budgeted over kind of what we're showing here from twenty-twenty-two to current budget. So, I guess I just want to say thank you. Like, it's a lot of work to do this for each of the funds and it's greatly appreciated. So, thank you for being smart with your budget. That's all. Good work.
Great job.
Jeff, can I ask about Fund Fifty? In comparison, you were talking about the increase of twenty cents this year per lunch meal. What is the equivalent in other adjacent districts? What does it cost elsewhere?
So, we stayed just slightly, one of our metrics seems to be sometimes trying to stay just a little bit below the average. To piggyback off of that, so we are just a little bit below the average. We're, we'd gotten ahead of the average a little bit for a while back in twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen. So, we were able to just manage without for a while. One of the unique things is there are districts that are starting to go away from the National School Lunch Program. In our county, Wanakee hasn't participated in the National School Lunch Program for many years. There is an uptick of communities in the Lake Geneva area that are looking to move away from it as well.
What do they replace it with?
Just paid and anybody that can't afford it, if they would have qualified for the program, the district has, you know, upped the amount for paying members to pay for those that cannot.
Gotcha.
So, it's, it's unique. People are doing it to try to stay away from all of the rules and regulations. Our team here doesn't feel that's appropriate.
Good.
Yeah. I mean, it is, it is the biggest restaurant in town.
It is.
So, keep that in mind.
My grandson says it's the best.
Nelson's is our largest Uber service as well.
Yes.
Uber service.
Tough people to like it that way.
Last question I have about Fund Forty-One, so Capital Project.
Yes.
I know that historically the district is proactive with regards to roofing projects like you mentioned and replacements and repair. What happens to funding or where do you hold front funding from in the event that something unexpected occurs? So, if another boiler that was not budgeted for needs repair sooner than projected, what is the strategy of the school district?
So, for emergencies, which we haven't had too many in at least my twenty years here, is we do use fund balance that comes from the general fund. So, it's another, one of the reasons why we do try to maintain not only an amount to avoid cash flow borrowing, but also leaves us an amount that if something were to occur. I wouldn't be surprised if we were to, if we were to gain some more fund balance, we might put this roofing plan to use maybe some of the revenues we might be able to put into the designated fund balance area, so.
What's the advantage to having money in Fund Forty-One versus doing that versus just taking it out of fund balance from Fund Ten?
It actually helps you with, in your equalized aid formula, so that you can kind of avoid being in negative tertiary aid, which is probably a three-credit class that we're not planning on.
Was not my favorite part of school business.
But we're one of the few school districts in Dane County that still does not really have negative state aid in the tertiary level.
I would just make a comment that being so much familiar with area school district hot lunch programs, we would rate, rate number one, I think, in the quality of service, both the quality of food and everything that's involved with the delivery through the lunch program, breakfast program itself.
I think, I think people, anytime we have a parent that is, has heard that maybe our offerings don't look great, we do point them to our Facebook page for food service so that they can see the presentation because our, our staff take a lot of pride in how the food does look and how it tastes.
What was the, just, just the fact that we had a flooded kitchen and never missed a beat as far as getting meals out to all of the kids? I think that's pretty remarkable.
Yes, May sixth, our staff, including even Mr. Turner and Mr. Rango, were available to help our food service make sure that they could operate breakfast that morning even though we had a flood occurring, so.
Remarkable.
I think, you know, if that ever were to happen again, feel free to call on board members also. Be excited, be glad to help out whatever.
Not gonna have that problem again.
Heaven forbid.
I said that problem. All right, well, Aaron, you can move past this slide. We actually kind of covered it. As just a reminder, coming up for the community that is here to vote on it, you will have opportunity to make motions on a past referendum and also, it's not necessarily a failed referendum, but a budget referendum, excuse me, a tax levy that is status quo.
So, this just gives, by having these two questions, it gives the board flexibility to move forward regardless of the outcome of the November fifth referendum. So, these are our recommended motions for the electors to consider.
So, you recommend that we don't make both motions?
Separately.
One at a time, yes.
I'll make a motion then.
So, we're on item seven?
Number seven, be it resolved that the school board be authorized to levy a tax of up to twenty million, one-hundred-eleven-thousand, eight-hundred-seventy-four dollars for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five school year if the majority votes in favor of the referendum to exceed the revenue cap limit, the revenue limit in the November fifth, twenty-twenty-four election.
Go ahead.
I would second.
Okay, so we've got Tom and Angie. Any additional discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous, four-zero?
No, just the motion carries.
Oh, sorry. Motion carries. So, then we would move on to item eight.
I can make that motion. Be it resolved that the school board be authorized to levy a tax of up to eighteen million, three-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand, eight-hundred-seventy-four dollars for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five school year if the majority votes against the referendum to exceed the revenue limit in the November fifth, twenty-twenty-four election.
Do I have a second?
I can second that.
Groups? Any further discussion?
Can I ask a question? The increased amount of point four-seven percent as opposed to holding steady from this revised budget, twenty-three, twenty-four, the slight increase, is there, can you provide this detail?
So, at the board meeting just prior, there was the adjustment made to the posting that is part of that packet.
Perfect.
Thank you. Appreciate the part.
Yeah, so the timing, when you need to, to post the packet and there are changes that are made after that.
So, it wasn't, it's not an option to hold people to what we see from last year as a result because of that adjustment.
Yep.
Correction. Thank you.
So, there's a motion and a second for item eight? Yes. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four-zero unanimously?
No.
Oh, jeez.
You're very consistent.
That happens every year.
Motion carries unanimously.
Unanimously.
It should be ten-zero.
There we go. All right.
All right. So, we are moving on to item number nine, which is, one of the powers of the annual meeting is determining the salaries for the school board members. Currently, all members are compensated equally, all five, at a, at three-thousand-seven-hundred dollars annually. There was an increase in two thousand twenty-three, was fairly minor, it was just around to a whole number, to be honest, I think it was like three-thousand-six-hundred and some, something. It's just below the average for Dane County. There's a fairly significant range across the county in compensation. In some districts, the president does receive more and some it's the same as, as we have. I mean, some it's as much as, as, as double compensation. I just want to highlight that those tasks and responsibilities of being a board member are certainly not getting easier. So, it's become more complex, particularly with school funding issues and pandemics and things. So, we do appreciate the work that you do.
I would make a motion to freeze the school board salary at its current level. Do I have a second?
I can second that.
Discussion?
Jeff, can you clarify, sorry, you're the numbers man. Can you clarify how that amount is paid and the status of employment of board members with the district? Are they?
They are treated as employees.
Okay, so they're.
And they are compensated twice a year.
Okay, so they're having taxes taken out, like a taxes, is this subjected to that?
Yep.
Okay.
And we found out last year, we can't cut our salary unless we do it.
Yes, two times a year that you can refuse payment.
Yeah, because we, we considered that last spring.
The, the contract year or the, is that operating the same as other staff employees or district employees? What is the cycle?
It must be now.
Yeah, so October, April are the payments.
Okay.
They kind of align with when the elections happen.
So, so if this amount is approved in this, right now, this month is when the adjustment is effective? Perfect, okay.
Yeah, so the, getting back to that, the idea of if a board member refuses the payment, if they don't do, do that at certain times of the year, there are tax implications, so they would still pay taxes on that amount.
Yes, to follow up on that, do they have an FTE rule or they are not getting benefits?
They're not getting benefits.
Good question.
As a professional in the compensation world, it would not be best practice to freeze salaries for any employees currently based on alignment to the cost of labor and the cost of living. So, I agree with the motion, however, based on what's happening in the labor market, that is a, a strategy that might not work in other industries. So, this is conservative for others to know based on what would probably be a recommendation from my perspective and opinion. So, a conservative move furthermore.
Any other discussion?
The only comment I would make is that my input could be different depending on the outcome of the referendum. We don't have that luxury to wait.
Anything else? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Well done.
Good job.
Thank you. Okay, next is disposal of surplus. Number ten. Where ten go? Oh, reimbursement, oh, reimbursement of school board members. Reimbursement of school board members. And, oh, we just did ten, right?
No, we're doing ten now.
Yeah, nine, nine and ten are similar in some ways, but.
So ten's at the bottom, but then it goes into the next page.
Oh, I see, determine salaries and then reimburse, oh, I get it.
Right.
Okay, number ten, reimbursement of school board members. And that's, um, talking about expenses, no sort of reimbursement. It actually reads authorize the payment of actual and necessary expenses of a school board member when traveling in the performance of duties and their reimbursement for actual loss of earnings when duties require the school board member to be absent from regular employment. Uh, the board is paid for food and lodging and other miscellaneous except, uh, expenses when conducting school business outside the district. Mileage is based on the IRS reimbursement rate. I would look for a motion to approve.
I would move to authorize the payment of actual and necessary expenses of a school board member when traveling in the performance of duties and their reimbursement for actual loss of earnings when duties require the school board member to be absent from regular employment.
Thank you, do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Caitlin.
Caitlin, okay, all right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor.
Quick question for clarification.
Sure.
For the definition of actual and necessary expenses, how are those defined?
So that can also lead to if a board member has to, uh, spend a whole day on school business, they could end up getting reimbursed for their lost wages, um, because they are not able to be in their employment. So, we are, receive actual information, um, from their employers if that were to be the case. Maybe it's happened once or twice in the last twenty years.
Okay, any other questions or comment? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, eleven, disposal of surplus property. Be it resolved that the school board of the District of McFarland is hereby authorized during the current school year to sell and dispose of any tangible personal property no longer needed by the school district and belonging to the school district. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Second?
I would second that.
Angie?
Oh, sure.
Just one of the things I just want to point out, when you talk about property, is that we're not talking about land, we're talking about like a equipment, like a tractor. Something cool.
Yes.
Any discussion?
Jeff, do you see any big-ticket items that will have to be replaced at all?
In the, not this fiscal year, but the future fiscal year, we have amount of, uh, vehicles that will have to be part of our plans for removal and then replacement.
We lease all the vehicles?
We do not release any vehicles.
Oh, okay.
Partly because we're able to also maintain some of our equipment using our fabulous students.
Well, they'll tech it, so.
And some of the vehicles have been donated, is that correct?
For the purposes of like, we only have them in maintenance, in Billings Grounds.
What about student transportation, like two events?
Two.
Events?
A van.
It was like, yeah, yeah, the vans.
So, we only have one van.
Okay.
That's our Sparty van, that's used for when we have limited amount of kids, usually just the golf program.
I think that was a, that was a donated.
It was.
Vehicle a long time ago.
Actually, we purchased that through Enterprise, um, about six years ago.
There, there was one that was donated many years ago.
Okay, it's been a while back, so. It's probably outlived its life.
Oh, I'm sure. Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. The annual meeting date, be it resolved that pursuant to SS one-two-zero dot zero-eight-one, the school board of the, the school board of the School District of McFarland is hereby authorized to set the annual meeting date for twenty twenty-five, twenty-four. Is there one out there that?
Typically, I bring this forward during our budget calendar for the twenty-five, twenty-six. So in December, you'll see that new calendar and the recommendation, and we'll have an action item prepared. But it's typically going to be that third, if not fourth, Monday in October, October twenty twenty-five.
But this gives the, if the electors, um, take action, it gives the board the right to set that date at a separate time.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I can make that motion.
Second? Thank you. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Other new business within the power and authority of the annual meeting? Does anybody have anything they would like to bring forward? If not, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Oh. Angie wants to do it so bad.
I can second, that's all right.
Tom?
Can you tell me the motion?
Okay, and Angie?
I will second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you one and all for your attendance and your contributions.
I, I know.
It went a little longer than forty-one minutes.
Is that the record, forty-one minutes?
Well, I slowed it down for the record.